Testing audio, check one, two.
Yes, the rest of it.
I'll put it in this video for the new working class.
Okay. This is never work.
We are gathering here today on the Treaty territory of the Mississauga and Credit First Nation. Before them, the traditional territory of the Horas, Nikiron and Wendat. We also acknowledge the many First Nations, Métis and anyone other global indigenous people that now call Brampton their home. Please all rise for the singing of our national anthem to be followed by a moment of personal reflection.
She's gonna add it after. Oh. Where's the "Oh Canada"?
Can you tell Sukie just play the regular "Oh Canada"?
Where's?
Sukie, can you just play the regular "Oh Canada"? Please? For now?
Where'd he go to?
Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true, the strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you. Welcome to our regular council meeting in February 26, 2025. I see you have members of Councilor, Councilor Power, Councilor Tor, Councilor Singh, Councilor Keenan, Councilor Santos, Councilor Brier and to the clerk who do we have online?
Through you, Mayor Brown, we have Councilor Visante joining us online today.
Okay, great. We have a request before the start of the meeting from Councilor Brier to have an African acknowledgement given that it is the last meeting during the Black History Month celebrations. And I believe there's also requests for the anthem. Order Councilor Brier.
Thank you. Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. So this request came from the Notre Dame students from Ward 6. I'm just so very thankful to have them here delegate in the starting of the month for Black History Month. And for the African ancestral acknowledgement, I would like to just read it just to make sure that we are also paying respects. The city of Brampton acknowledges all treaty peoples, including those who came here as settlers, as migrants, either in this generation or in generations past. And those of us who came here involuntary, particularly... here involuntary, particularly those brought to these lands as a result of the transatlantic slave trade and slavery. We pay tribute to those ancestors of the African origin and descent. Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor.
And councillor Brar, you mentioned that there was a request for the anthem as well?
Yes.
So we're looking to IT if they have that ability? Do we have that ability? Okay, well then, I guess we don't at this time, but maybe we'll make sure that we have the ability for the, maybe near the end of the meeting, we could play the anthem. Thank you for that suggestion councillor Brar, very appropriate. Okay, we're now at item two approval of the agenda. We've got some updates from the clerk.
Through you, Mayor Brown. Revised Agenda was published Monday afternoon with the following items. Item 6.1, Proclamation G, Day of Remembrance and Action on Religious Freedoms, was added and published. Item 10.6.1, report was added and published. Item 12.3, summary of recommendations from Audit Committee, was published. And item 18.11, Bylaw 41 2025 to amend traffic bylaw related to no parking, the bylaw was added and published. Further revisions were added on Tuesday afternoon and included 12.2, the minutes from the Planning and Development Committee. And this morning, Government Relations Matters will be added to the public record.
Are there any other items members wish to raise at this point? I believe there's another potential addition from councillor Tor I have in my notes? Okay, councillor Tor.
I had an announcement to add that I had emailed the clerk.
Through you, Mayor. Councillor Tor has sent an announcement regarding 2025 Support Ontario Youth Tools in the Trades Bootcamp, City Hall, February 28, 2025.
6.3, okay. I see no one else on the board, no other additions. So we have motion moved by councillor Keenan, seconded by councillor Santos to approve the agenda. All those in favor? Motion carries. Declarations of interest on the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Does any member have a declaration of pecuniary interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act? See none, the clerk will so note. Adoption of council minutes. Do any members have any questions or comments regarding the minutes from February 5, 2025? See none, I have a motion moved by councillor Power, seconded by councillor Singh to approve the deputy minutes as published and circulated. All those in favor? Motion carries. Consent motion. We'll go through the items that can be added to consent. 8.1, Staff Update, Government Relations Matters. Staff Report, Passing of Deeming Bylaw to De-Register Block 2. Staff Report, Toronto Metropolitan TMU Brampton Venture Zone Funding Agreement. Staff Report, Terry Fox Memorial at Shinkoozie Park. Staff Report, Parking Review for Massages at Ramadan. 12.1, Minutes, Planning and Development Committee. Hold for delegation, Summary Recommendations for Committee of Council. Summary Recommendations, Audit Committee. I believe there's an amendment that we need to do. So hold. Planning and Development Committee, February 24. Hold for possible delegation? No delegations, okay, put that in consent. Discussion on Request of Regional Councillor Plessy Development Charges for Office. Hold. Notice of motion response to US tariff threat and support Brampton's economy. Hold. Preferred Matters List. Closed Session Note to File, City Council. Closed Session Note to File, Committee of Council, February 19. And then we have a verbal update for 19.3 to be held. The clerk will summarize those items to be included on a consent motion for approval.
Through Mayor Brown, the following items will be included on the consent motion. 8.1, Staff Update, Government Relations Matters. 10.2.1, Staff Report, Passing of a Deeming Bylaw to De-Register Block 2, Plan 43M, 1907. 10.4.1, Staff Report, Toronto Metropolitan University Brampton Venture Zone Funding Agreement. 10.5.1, Staff Report, Terry Fox Memorial. 10.6.1, Staff Report, Parking Review for Massages at Ramadan. 12.1, Minutes, Planning and Development Committee. 12.2 is held, sorry. And 12.4, Minutes for Planning and Development Committee. 16.1, Referred Matters List. 19.1, Closed Session Note to File, City Council. And 19.2, Closed Session Note to File, Committee of Council, February 19. And that's it, sir.
Okay, we have announcements. We have, oh, you know, motion for the consent motion. So moved by councillor Tor, seconded by councillor Brar to approve the consent motion. All those in favor? Motion carries. This takes us to proclamations, and we have a large number of proclamations today. The first one is for Brampton Steelheads Day. And I know councillor Keenan, with numerous kids in hockey, wanted to read this one out, and he is a big fan of OHL hockey. So to Brampton Steelheads Day, can you do the honor? Councillor Keenan.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Brampton Steelheads Day. Whereas the Brampton Steelheads are a proud and cherished part of Brampton community for their outstanding athleticism, dedication and commitment to excellence in the sport of hockey. The Brampton Steelheads have consistently demonstrated sportsmanship, teamwork and resilience, becoming a source of inspiration for youth and hockey enthusiasts in the city and beyond. The Brampton Steelheads have contributed to the growth of hockey in the region, fostering community engagement, promoting healthy lifestyles and providing a platform for athletes to showcase their skills. March 23 marks the final game of the regular season of their inaugural year. To mark the end of the regular season, the Brampton Steelheads will have their Fan Appreciation Game with activations, activities, giveaways and entertainment for people of all ages. We encourage all residents to celebrate the team's remarkable accomplishments and its contributions to the community in the spirit of sportsmanship that defines the Brampton Steelheads. Let the day serve as a reminder of the values and dedication, teamwork and perseverance and the celebration of the passion of hockey that brings our community together. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of the City of Brampton Council, do hereby proclaim March 23, 2025 as Brampton Steelheads Day in the City of Brampton.
Thank you councillor Keenan. Do we have any representatives from the Brampton Steelheads here today? We don't, so we'll make sure this gets sent over to the Steelheads to be displayed at their office. Our next delegation is for National Kidney Month, and we have a request from councillor Power to read this proclamation, which is dear to his heart.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. National Kidney Month. March is recognized as National Kidney Month, a time for individuals, healthcare professionals and organizations to unite to promote kidney health and providing support to those impacted by kidney disease. World Kidney Day will be observed on March 13, 2025, serving as an opportunity to raise awareness for kidney health and the global burden of kidney disease. The Kidney Foundation of Canada stands at the forefront in the fight against kidney disease, committed to eliminating its burden through funding and stimulating innovative research for better prevention, treatment and a cure. The efforts and initiatives surrounding National Kidney Month, including digital campaigns, World Kidney Day activities at William Offir, aim to promote kidney health across communities, encourage early detection and prevention of kidney disease, address health disparities and ensure equitable access to care, support the lifesaving act of organ donation, empower patients and caregivers with the knowledge and resources to take control of their health. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim March 2025 as National Kidney Month in the City of Brampton.
Thank you councillor Power and for your work supporting those fundraising efforts locally. Our next recognition day for proclamations is March 18, which is Transit Operator and Worker Appreciation Day. And I know councillor Tor is a big supporter of ATU and our transit operators that do incredible work in the city. Councillor Tor.
Thank you through you, Mayor Brown. I have a proclamation here that reads, whereas on March 18, transit authorities across the world are celebrating Transit Operator and Worker Appreciation Day. In 2009, riders from Seattle created Transit Driver Appreciation Day to show appreciation for their hardworking and dedicated transit drivers. This initiative has since gained popularity and many transit authorities celebrate this event on March 18. The date is said to be the day transit service debuted in Paris in 1662. Our transit team worked diligently every day to keep the city moving. It takes a great team to get our services on the road, from cleaning and maintaining our buses, to planning and scheduling our services, to connecting riders to their final destinations, to communicating and engaging with them, to providing assistance in person, on the phone, at our terminals and facilities and so much more. There is a lot that happens every day behind the scenes and on the front lines. In recognition of this, the City of Brampton celebrates Transit Operator and Worker Appreciation Day to revel in the wonderful role our transit workers play within our organization and community. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim March 18, 2025 as Transit Operator and Worker Appreciation Day in the City of Brampton.
Thank you councillor Tor. And just to verify, do we have anyone from ATU here to receive that proclamation? I don't believe so, so we'll make sure that is sent over to Andrew and his team. And National Kidney Month, do we have anyone here from National Kidney Month? Perfect. So what else? I'm going to do a photo at the end of all the proclamations, but if you wanted to have a word now, you're more than welcome to. But don't.
Ready? Okay.
We're excited to have you here.
You want to tell them your name?
My name's Emmett.
Emmett, nice to see you here today.
On behalf of the Kidney Foundation, in particular the Brampton Kidney Chapter, I would like to extend my sincere gratitude to Mayor Brown, members of council and the City of Brampton for proclaiming March as Kidney Month. This proclamation plays a vital role in raising awareness about kidney health, encouraging early detection and supporting those affected by kidney disease in our community. One in 10 individuals are affected by kidney disease, totaling around 4 million people nationally and has no cure. Your leadership in recognizing the importance of this cause helps bring attention to the increasing number of individuals impacted by kidney disease and the need for education, prevention and research. With your support, we can continue to spread awareness, promote kidney health and provide resources to those in need. Mayor Brown and councillor Power, I would like to personally thank you for the role you have played in our events and your commitment to supporting your kidney community. We truly appreciate your dedication to the well-being of Brampton residents. Some who have joined us today to celebrate and encourage you all to continue to support the Kidney Foundation initiatives throughout the year, such as the Brampton Kidney Walk at Ching Park in the fall. Once again, thank you for your commitment to kidney health and for supporting this important initiative.
Amazing.
Emmett would like to invite you to something.
Yeah, Emmett?
Every year, we have a bake sale at the Kidney Walk to raise money for the kidneys.
And are we invited to come? Awesome, awesome. Okay, well, we're going to be there, so thank you for the personal invite. We'd be honored to attend. And thank you for coming here to deliver that official invitation.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I believe councillor Power, that was a first year event this year, wasn't it? Third year, but it was massive. So even though it's a new event in Brampton, it's now bigger than many other communities. And so for those that didn't have the chance to attend the walk every fall, Shinkoozie Park, and just a great community fundraiser for a great cause, so we'll be excited to support it again. Our next proclamation is for Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, observed every March, is an opportunity to promote understanding and inclusion for individuals with developmental disabilities and to highlight their significant contributions to our communities. Concord in the City, a local charitable organization, has been providing opportunities for adults with developmental disabilities since 2015 through their day program and innovative coffee truck experience. By the way, that coffee truck has the best blue lemonade anywhere in Canada. I know my kids ask for it every time they see the truck. Concord in the City focuses on skill building, social inclusion and meaningful employment opportunities, empowering individuals to contribute to their communities while gaining independence. In recognition of Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, Concord in the City will be hosting a Free Cookie Day on March 8 to thank the City of Brampton for their support and raise awareness of employing people with developmental disabilities. By recognizing March as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, the City of Brampton takes an important step to building a more inclusive and equitable community. I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim March 2025 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in the City of Brampton. And I believe we have a representative from Concord in the city, and a big turnout of kids here today who have come. And so we're elated to have you here, here this morning at Brampton City Hall. We're going to take a photo together when we finish the proclamations, but if you want to have a word about the importance of Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, it's our honor to have you here in front of us today.
One blue raspberry, two cups for Patrick Brown and his children. We know the order when we see them. I'm just waiting for a few of my participants to join me up here to say thank you. Aiden, do you want to come stand over here? Good morning, everyone. I want to take a moment to express my deepest gratitude to councillor Santos, Mayor Patrick Brown and the City of Brampton for their continued support and commitment to inclusion. Too often, individuals with disabilities are sown only for their limitations, but when we shift our perspective and recognize their potential, we open doors to endless possibilities. The City of Brampton has demonstrated time and again that it is dedicated to building the opportunity to thrive, to building a community where everyone has the opportunity to thrive. By working with organizations that champion inclusivity, the city is helping to pave the way for a future where barriers are broken and every individual is valued for their contributions. Thank you for your leadership and for making Brampton a more inclusive and welcoming place for all. And yes, at our final Coffee Truck Day on March 8, we will be giving away a free cookie with a purchase of a drink to thank the City of Brampton and its members for the support of the coffee truck and realizing that individuals with developmental disabilities have the potential. And as well, we are having a paint night with an autism advocate leading it on March the 5th over at our location. So hoping to show the potential and ability. So thank you so much.
Amazing. Also, for those who are new to downtown, please stop by every Tuesday and Friday at the Coffee Truck. We need customers. Well, everyone needs more caffeine, and I'm pretty sure everyone agrees that cookies are great, so we'll make sure that you're busy and we'll make sure this is, we'll present this. Okay, our next proclamation, councillor Santos has requested to read something she's very passionate about. March 8 is International Women's Day. I believe this will be done by councillor Brar and Santos together.
Thank you so much, Mayor Brown. Whereas International Women's Day is celebrated in the City of Brampton by recognizing the contributions of women and girls to our lives, community and globally, by engaging in advocacy events throughout the city that raise the importance of creating a gender-inclusive municipality while also addressing the gaps that still exist for women and girls in terms of gender parity.
The Zonta Club of Brampton Calladen is a group of volunteers driven by the common purpose of making the world a better place for women and girls. Each year, the club hosts advocacy events and generates critical service funds for agencies providing central needs such as housing, food, social services and education, both locally and globally. The United Nations recognized 1975 as International Women's Year and began celebrating March 8 as International Women's Day. Through the themes change, though the themes change year to year, gender parity remains the biggest challenge, and we are still advocating for equality in terms of social, cultural, economic and political opportunities. Fifty years following the first International Women's Day, the City of Brampton has created the Brampton Women's Advisory Committee and the Women's Empowerment Network to
the Brampton Women's Advisory Committee and the Women's Empowerment Network to stimulate action and serve as a resource to council. The words we speak today impact our tomorrow. We encourage you to start meaningful conversations that recognize the achievements of women, especially with youth who are next generation of leaders.
Be a role model by empowering change in the face of adversity and eliminating social injustice that led to doubt and fear. Gender parity is when equal opportunity for all is achieved, and when we get there, a better world will exist for women and girls. Therefore, I Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim March 8th, 2025 as International Women's Day in the City of Brampton.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Thank you. I believe Zonta is here, so we will present this as well, but I think they want to say a few words perhaps.
And, and Zonta's been a great partner to the City of Brampton in celebrating International Women's Day, so thank you for the collaboration as always.
Thank you. Mayor Brown, council from the City of Brampton, we do appreciate your support at the Zonta Club of Brampton Calladen. We are a local, a district, and an international club, and when we do travel, we do talk very dearly about the relationship that we have and the work that we do and the impact that we have in our community because we work together. So thank you for that. And coming up, we are having our International Women's Day Advocacy brunch. Well, no, not brunch, it's breakfast this time, and it's very early, 7:30 in the morning. We do get you to work, we get you out by nine. But we are doing a report card on post-pandemic, the status of women, on finance, intimate partner abuse, domestic violence, gender-based violence, all as one, and also on finance and mental health. So we're having experts speak on all three of those things. If you'd like to join us, we'd love to have you, but we do appreciate the advocacy that happens all year long on behalf of making our city a better place for women and girls. So thank you.
And thank you to the Women's Empowerment Network here at the city, who are also going to be making an announcement today in regards to International Women's Day. We're making all these wonderful things happen within the city, and it's just proud to be a part of it, so thank you.
Thank you very much, and we'll have the proclamation to present to you as soon as we finish all the proclamations, and we'll take a group photo with council. The next proclamation is something that Counselor Deputy Mayor Singh wanted to read. It turns out this is one of his favorite things to listen to when he does his walks. Over to Deputy Mayor Singh for Reggae Month.
Thank you, and it is actually one of my favorite genres of music. For Reggae Month, whereas reggae music originating from Jamaica in the late 1960s has become a global symbol of cultural expression, unity, and social justice, whereas reggae music has been, has made significant contributions to global music, art, and culture, transcending borders and uniting people of diverse backgrounds through its powerful rhythms, messages of peace, and calls for equality, whereas the people of the Caribbean diaspora have made a valuable contribution to the City of Brampton in areas such as culture, community building, and economic development, whereas the City of Brampton is proud to be home to a vibrant and diverse community with a rich cultural fabric that celebrates the contributions of Caribbean Canadians and their heritage, whereas February has recognized the Reggae Month, has been recognized as the Reggae Month in recognition of the history, evolution, and global influence of reggae music, whereas the Farrakhs Music Foundation plays a vital role in preserving and promoting reggae culture through education, performance, and community engagement, helping to foster deeper understanding of reggae music's impact on global culture, whereas during the month of February lets us recognize and appreciate the vital role that reggae music plays in fostering unity, pride, and cultural exchange, and inspire future generations to continue spreading its message of love, peace, and social justice. Therefore, I Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim February 2025 as Reggae Month in the City of Brampton. Thank you, Mayor Brown.
And do we have a representative from Reggae Month to say a word? Okay. I'll present this up.
Sing it.
Thank you so much, Mayor Brown, and the council, and of course, the City of Brampton. As concert general of Jamaica here in the Greater Toronto Area, I'm very excited and thankful for the proclamation that you have issued. You know, while reggae, as your proclamation says, originates in Jamaica, it has certainly become a global brand and a global product, which is why it has been designated by UNESCO as a part of the intangible cultural heritage of humanity. And we know that the City of Brampton has always been a place where the message and the culture of reggae for social justice, for inclusion, for love, and for peace has always been embraced, and so we thank you. I have one of your constituents and leader for our Jamaican community here in Brampton who is right beside me, because we are always gonna be working together with you to ensure that this proclamation is effective, not just this year, but year after year going forward. Thank you once again. One love to all. Thank you.
And just to say, it certainly is a gift to the world from Jamaica, and proud to have not only the Jamaica Day Concert that is a celebration of music and culinary delights, but we also have Jambana, so a number of major events in Brampton that thousands and thousands come to to show their love for reggae. So thank you for being here, and we'll present this proclamation to you. But we have one last proclamation to do before we do the photos, and that is the Day of Remembrance and Action on Religious Freedom. Today marks the 14th anniversary of the martyrdom of the late, great Shabazz Body, and his brother, Peter Body, is amongst us here today. The young Christian federal minister, he was assassinated for promoting interfaith harmony and for his opposition to the blasphemy laws. Shabazz Body died at age 42 defending a cause to which he had dedicated his life. Today is a reminder that his voice is not silenced, that his message still resonates around the world. The Canadian-Pakistani Christian community of Brampton is heartbroken but remains strong and dedicated to voicing their support for religious freedoms here in Brampton and across the world. Shabazz Body's legacy contributes to the city's rich cultural mosaic and highlights the importance of interfaith harmony, acceptance, and tolerance for minority groups within a diverse society such as Brampton. The City of Brampton condemns all forms of targeting religious minorities and reaffirms its commitment to uphold the right of religious freedom, and that hatred, that hatred has no place in the community. And this is very personal for us in Brampton. You know, Shabazz Body was a hero, a crusader for religious freedom in Pakistan, but his family is in Brampton. And so when he lost his, his life advocating for religious freedom, we felt it here very personally, a true hero, and I know his work continues to, to go on. And of course, we're so proud to have a Shabazz Body Park in the City of Brampton as a symbol of, of our pride in that universal human right of religious freedom. And just to say, you know, Counselor Power and myself were in Pakistan a number of years ago. We were told simply having a park named after Shabazz Body would not be possible back in Pakistan, and for really to have a park here in his name really speaks to our resolute commitment to religious freedom in the city. I know Peter is here, and will probably like to say a word on behalf of his late brother in recognition of the Day of Remembrance and Action on Religious Freedom. Peter, if you want to join us up front?
Thank you, Patrick, Mayor Brown, and all the counselors. On behalf of International Christian Voice, my family, and Pakistani Christian community, I am sincerely thanks to all of you to proclaim the 2nd March the Day of Freedom and Remembrance and Action. This is a great honor for our community, which you did for the, our brother, Marty Shabazz Bhatti, who gave his entire life to highlight the plight of religious minorities and also promoting of interfaith harmony. Due to his commitment and dedication and the life which he gave for the people, he sent the message to the forces of violence and darknesses that there is no space in this planet for people those are targeted by the faith or other issues. He always stands for justice and for the equality for all, not only one faith, for all, everyone. So I also thank to Mayor and also City of Council to naming the park of my brother Shabazz Bhatti. It is very encouragement for our community and community in large those believe on religious freedom and interfaith. And it is a symbol when everyone who will see the Shabazz Park, and it will be questioned, who was Shabazz Bhatti? So it will be an issue that can be come forward that what is the importance from the religious freedom? We also thank you for giving us space on 1st March to celebrate the Day of Remembrance and Action on Religious Freedom in your city hall. We, as a community, also thank again to all counselors in the leader of, leadership of you, that we are the city where we feel proud and we live with dignity and honor. Thank you, and also I want to thank you, our friend, Mr. Yeshua, who has continued reminding us about all those things. Thank you, and God bless all.
Okay, members of council, we, for the groups that are here today, we want to take a photo to present the proclamation with each group, so if you could join me up front. Everyone's patience with those important proclamations. Our next announcement is for International Women's Day. Our council sponsors are Counselors Santos and Brar, and I believe we have members of the Women's Empowerment Network executive who will make an announcement.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Sarah Mazur, and I am the chair-
My name is Sarah Mazur and I am the Chair for Women Empowerment Network and I am joined here with my colleagues from WIN as well as Equity Office. The role of WIN is, WIN is dedicated to supporting and uplifting and connecting women in the workplace. I wanted to make an announcement here today. We're excited to invite all the staff as well as council for our International Women's Day celebration on March 6th at 1:00 PM in City Hall Conservatory. And the event is, this year's theme is Accelerate Action and our event will highlight the importance of advancing women into leadership roles. We're thrilled to feature a keynote address by Dr. Faria Khan, who is a distinguished leader and advocate for women's empowerment. Following that, we'll host a panel discussion on supporting women into leadership, featuring incredible women staff members from within the city who will share their experience and insights. And the event is open to all staff and we encourage everyone to attend, engage, and be part of the conversation on advancing gender equity in our workplace. So we look forward to seeing you all there on March 6th at 1:00 PM. Thank you for your support.
Thank you so much. And Councilor Santos, did you want, Brar, do you want to speak to this?
Just very quickly, thank you so much, Mayor Brown and to our Women's Empowerment Network. It's been wonderful to see how the network has grown and the support that you're getting. Both Councilor Brar and I, obviously you know, we're big supporters of all the work you do and making sure that you have the mentorship and opportunities so that we build the pipeline in the city of Brampton to see more women in those leadership tables. Strongly encouraging colleagues and everyone, allies, women, everyone, to participate and attend, including International Women's Day on March the 8th. Thank you.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, and just want to say thank you so much. It's amazing to see amazing, powerful women here making this announcement. But again, just want to make sure, making sure our colleagues are also there. Councilor Santos and I, we had a wonderful time last year, but making sure our mill colleagues are also there and anyone who can support them, seeing more men there might be very nice to see this year. So again, thank you so much for everything you do. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilor Brar and Santos for that. Our next item is item 6.3, which was added by Counselor Tor. Over to Counselor Tor. Oh, so Andrea Williams, I guess, I believe will be making the, yeah.
Good morning, Mayor Brown, members of council, senior leadership team, and city staff. My name is Andrea Williams, Sector Manager for Advanced Manufacturing with the city's Economic Development Office. And I'm so pleased to be here today to tell you about the tools and the trade boot camp event that we are hosting this Friday, February 28th, in collaboration with Support Ontario Youth. Support Ontario Youth is a registered charity funded by both the federal and provincial government that empowers apprentices and employers through mentorship, hands-on learning, and modernized feedback ensuring successful trade pathways. This week, our event will focus on supporting trades in three sectors, electrical, HVAC, and mill rights. The event will take place in two areas, one in the conservatory offering participants practical skills through hands-on tool experiences, and the second will be in the West Tower Training Room, providing employability skills such as resume building, interviewing tips, and an opportunity to network with local employers. Several employers from Brampton have confirmed their participation, such as Cube Building Systems, AirCom Heating and Cooling Systems, Right Time Group of Companies, P Square, and Service Canada, providing them an opportunity to recruit future employees, network with other industrial professionals, and contribute to the success of future skilled tradespeople. The program is open to individuals 18 and older and recent high school graduates interested in pursuing a career in the skilled trades. All participants will receive a complimentary starter toolkit, giving them tools to start their journey from day one, along with a complimentary lunch. We are so proud to sponsor this event and provide a platform that will enable future tradespeople an opportunity to learn and also engage with employers in their own community. Skilled trades contribute significantly to the local economy by supporting industries such as construction, manufacturing, and automotive. These trades ensure that essential infrastructure and services are maintained and developed, driving economic growth. With a growing demand for skilled workers and by promoting and investing in these careers, Brampton is actively contributing to a solution that will address the skilled trades gap and ensure there are enough qualified workers to meet industry demands, creating a strong foundation for future generations. So in closing, please be sure to check out the boot camp this Friday at any point between 8:30 AM and 3:00 PM to enjoy some networking and to see some of these future tradespeople in action. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor Tor. Anything you want to add?
No, I think it's fantastic that Economic Development is sponsoring an event like this. We hear about the labor shortages, the challenges across the industry, but it's great to see local Brampton businesses that are stepping up to also, you know, help young folks enter the workforce here. So thank you, Andrea, for all the work you do behind the scenes, and I look forward to being here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Motion to receive the presentation by Counselor Tor, seconded by Counselor Singh. All those in favor, motion carries. Also for the Women's Empowerment Network, moved by Counselor Santos and Brar to receive. All those in favor, motion carries. Are there any public delegations for 7.1? Seeing none. We have 7.2 here. This is Gloria Berger.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor Brown and councilors. On behalf of our volunteers at Historic Boverde House, I'd like to thank the city of Brampton, facilities, services, parks and recreation, and especially everyone who has visited Historic Boverde House over the years for their wonderful support and encouragement. I would also like to add that we are in agreement and understand the necessity for an agreement between the Friends and the city, and would like to thank the city and all our volunteers for their efforts to forge an agreement and their patience and understanding during this process. Sadly, to date, an agreement has not yet been reached, and I hope that our recent communication with council sent Tuesday, February 18th, has helped to clarify our concerns. Suffice to say that we were very close to reaching an agreement after our meeting of December 12th and appreciate the efforts of the city of Brampton lawyer, Chris Pratt, in clarifying a number of details. With that said, we are looking forward to continuing to help in any way possible with the continuation of the legacy of Historic Boverde House by supporting the longstanding agreement between the city and Masi Boverde when she generously donated the house and property in 1985. Given the covenant that runs with the land, there is a positive obligation to maintain the property for educational and cultural purposes. This has also been the mandate of the Friends for the past 30 years. Given that the city of Brampton has not yet issued the previously discussed request for proposals, it would appear that the Friends no longer maintaining the educational and cultural purposes for which they have been providing for the past 30 years in operating Historic Boverde House. This would seem to put the city in violation of the covenant if it simply shuts down current operations without having a concrete plan in place to establish new operations in the facility. Our vision as volunteers and citizens of Brampton is that Brampton's heritage continues to be explored through Historic Boverde House and that the house, property, and artifacts remain as they are and are used to educate and entertain visitors who want to learn and are interested in Brampton's heritage. Historic Boverde House is a precious time capsule which allows the public to explore Brampton's past. It is unique to Brampton and the city's obligation is to maintain the existing buildings and site in perpetuity as an historic site and park area for the benefit of the citizens of Brampton, and that the buildings will be used solely for cultural and educational purposes. The Friends have had a wonderful relation with the city staff who have worked very hard over the years to preserve the buildings and the grounds. As volunteers, one of the most significant challenges we have faced is the promotion of Historic Boverde House. All of our visitors are thrilled to see the house through guided tours provided by our volunteer interpreters, as well as many of our other educational events. However, during the tours, we have discovered that many visitors were unaware of the Boverde's gift of the house to the city of Brampton and the community. In spite of our efforts to change this by managing a website, Facebook page, and other forms of social media and advertising, this has been an ongoing challenge for us. After Counselor Santos' visit to Boverde House, we were encouraged by her vision and hope of the possibilities the city could find as ways to meet this and other challenges, providing for longer hours of operation, exploring the potential for museum status, which could open up the opportunity for future government grants, and to keep up and continue this beautiful and unique legacy, fulfilling the October 16th, 1985 purchase and sale agreement between the city and Masi Boverde. We would like to continue to partner with the city to help rise to the challenges that come with running Historic Boverde House. As volunteers, we have the same vision, and as the city continues to explore new ideas to support and preserve Historic Boverde House, there've been a number of options suggested. Perhaps the city can engage or partner with a group or institution such as PAMA, who can help promote and run Historic Boverde House, and that our volunteers could join with and support these groups so that we can continue the legacy of what was started so many, many, many years ago. Many of our volunteers are familiar with the history of the house, the families that lived there, and the beautiful collection of artifacts that helped the public to envision what it was like during the Victorian era. Most of you know Michael Avis and have an understanding of everything he has done over the years to promote Historic Boverde House and keeping the buildings and the families that lived there in the past alive. Michael recently passed away and we understand that the city will be naming a park or street after him. This is a fitting memorial that we know Michael and his surviving Jane will be appreciative. If it were not for Michael's initiative, hard work, and dedication, it's doubtful that Historic Boverde House would have evolved to become the beautiful, unique gem that it is today. If the city and the people who live here really want to honor Michael, the best way to do it is to preserve Historic Boverde House and its contents by continuing what Michael started and allowing our volunteers to work alongside the city to continue its legacy. I would like to request one of the councilors make a motion requesting an extension to June 30th to finalize the negotiations of the draft revised agreement between the city of Historic Boverde House and the city of Brampton.
Okay, thank you. Motion from Counselor Singh and Counselor Tor to receive the delegation.
Sorry?
To receive the delegation.
Okay. All those in favor, motion carries. The delegation is received.
Can I also bring the minutes now because this was a delegation to the minutes to clear that motion? Or should you want to do the motion for the proxy? Or is it easier to do it? Yeah, okay, okay.
Okay. Okay, so this takes us to our next item. We've done government relations on consent. 12.1. It takes us all the way to 12.1. Okay. Minutes, Planning Development Committee. To 12.2. Summary Recommendations Committee of Council. Over to Deputy Mayor.
I just had to clarify the proxy motion, so I think we worked with the clerk's office and just cleared the wording on that, and I'll put that forward. Thank you.
Okay. Motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Approve as amended. Moved by Deputy Mayor Singh, seconded by Counselor Tor. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to 12.3, Summary of Recommendations for Audit Committee. We have a slight amendment from Counselor Keenan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I believe we have the wording. The clerk has the wording for this?
So, so just prior to doing it, in clarification with staff, so this was just an amendment to the management, someone help me with the verbiage here. Management Action Plan, got it. So it's not really necessary for us to do it today because we can, this can be changed on the fly and it's not meant to hold to the nitty-gritty of the process really, but it is something that, that staff have the ability to change in as they go through the Management Action Plan themselves. So there isn't a need to do this, and I would be happy just to, as per the CAO, I spoke with the CAO on it and the Director of Audit. But if you want, we can't, I don't see there's it being an issue to go in either, but I don't know if Marlin wants to speak to it.
Through the mayor, to Counselor Keenan, this can be amended in the implementation of the action plan.
So we don't have to do it?
There's don't really need to amend it right now.
So you just accept, I can just receive it as?
Okay, okay. Moved by Counselor Keenan, seconded by Counselor Brar. All those in favor, the Audit Committee minutes are approved. This takes us all the way into discussion item. And this is on tariffs. Motion moved by Counselor Santos and myself, and we had a press conference this morning with Counselor Tor and Brar and Santos. I'll just speak briefly to this, but we have an amendment to the motion that I just put on the screen, so we have it. I really believe that this is a very dangerous threat right now to our economy in Canada with these punitive tariffs. We build things in Brampton. We export in Brampton. And we have so many, so many facilities in our community that export to the US. Canada has become too reliant on trade with the US because of geography. But we have many preferential trade agreements with other countries abroad, and it's why we've begun some advocacy to say, look at those new markets. And there are two, there needs to be a two-pronged approach. One, change this decision in Washington DC, and certainly, you know, we should do everything we can to change this because it will hurt the US as much as it hurts Canada. But at the same time, if we can't change them, there are markets around the world that need Brampton products, that need Canadian products. And I really think our Economic Development Department, our team at City Hall, can really help identify those new export markets. It was only a few weeks ago that I heard about an interesting opportunity for Brampton businesses in the steel and poultry space. Let's look at all those opportunities. So if we're not able to change the decision makers in Washington, then at least, you know, we are one of the first cities to move aggressively to identify new markets so we can protect Canadian jobs, protect Brampton workers. So I'm happy to support this motion, and I believe Counselor Santos and Tor will want to speak to it as well.
Thanks through you, Mr. Mayor. This has been some, like, when Donald Trump was talking about this initially before the holidays last year, many people thought he was joking and didn't necessarily take him seriously. I was one of the few who said, actually, no, we need to take this pretty seriously. He's the President of the United States, and I'm pretty sure he's serious about these threats. So I'm so pleased that we at the city have taken a very proactive approach, and over the past couple of months now, in lead-up to March 4th next week, are coming up with some pretty tangible items for us to work on in the Economic Development Office. Now, some of you will laugh, but this weekend I had breakfast with Brampton Batman. And the reason why I had breakfast with Brampton Batman was because he had an entire film crew from Germany filming his entire story about why he's Brampton Batman, et cetera. While we were having breakfast, this German media company, we were all talking about Trump tariffs and how allies in Europe and in Canada and in Mexico need to support each other against the United States' threats for a tariff war. So to the mayor's point, in terms of building our existing or strengthening our existing relationships abroad and finding new opportunities, I'm so pleased that we did a lot of work in the past related to foreign direct investment. I'm pleased that some of those relationships were solidified over the years because now, with perhaps a common enemy of the United States, that provides us with an opportunity and, and the door is kind of already open because we would have already developed that relationships. One of the other thing that I needed to point out was, the United States has recently decided to shut down a lot of investment in clean tech, clean technology, green technology, things related to climate change. That's an opportunity now for us to use that as our strength and invest in advanced manufacturing as it relates to clean tech. Because while the United States is exiting from any discussions related to climate change, Canada is still there. Europe is still there. South America is still there. Australia, New Zealand, they're still there. And so there's big opportunities in this, and thank you, Mayor, for, for bringing that up. One other amendment speaks to this point, which is making sure that we support the Economic Development Office in our ongoing efforts to plan and build and strengthen the market opportunities outside of the USA, in addition to us having those one-on-one conversations, city-to-city approach with United States mayors, councilors, business partners, who have a lot to do with the integrated supply chain from our businesses in Brampton. Thanks, Mayor Brown.
Thank you, Counselor Santos. Seeing no other speakers, we have the motion put forward by myself, seconded by Counselor Santos. All those in favor, motion carries. And I have to go back to one other item at 13.1, and we have a request from our Planning Commissioner for an additional week to get the, all the financial data for what this potential change would mean. And so can we defer this motion until?
Through the Chair, I would suggest that the motion be referred to the next available Councilor Committee meeting, because I understand there's a bit of a break coming up, March break.
Okay, so it'll be the next Committee of Council.
Committee of Council meeting. But in the interim, it would certainly help staff if we can just receive some direction today to initiate the amendment process for the existing DC bylaws, so work can continue in the background. We could, we don't need a motion for that, but just simply his direction.
Yeah, everyone's nodding, so moved by Counselor Tor, seconded by Deputy Mayor Singh. All those in favor, motion carries. Okay. Okay, this takes us to public question period. Seeing no questions from the public today, this takes us to bylaws of a motion moved by Counselor Keenan, seconded by Counselor Visante to approve bylaws 31, 2025 to 41, 2025 inclusive. All those in favor, motion carries. We have one closed session item. How long the clerk require? 10 minutes? 10 minutes, we'll meet in camera, and then we'll return back in public to report out any action taken from our, our in-camera session.
Council next scheduled to meet Wednesday, March 26, 2025, at 9:30 a.m. I have a motion moved by Counselor Power and seconded by Counselor Tor to adjourn today's meeting. All in favor, motion carries. Thank you.